Okay. So, I will call to order the Select Ward Meeting for Six O'Clock Agenda. We're a little tardy and apologize for that. So, is there any additions to the posted agenda?
There's a deletion, Mr. Chairman.
Deletion, yes.
The EDC candidate not coming today.
EDC candidate will not be here. Not be here, yeah. So, that's the interview. And moving right along, then, we're now into a public hearing for the amendment to Section 103, definition, and 809 site plan review for the town zoning regulations. And who is going to speak to that?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Get used to Michael. So, this is a change, the town zoning amendments, and it came about because in July 2018, Act 143 allowed through the state of Vermont accessory on-farm businesses. It also allows municipalities to review them under site plan review. We currently have a site plan review section of our zoning, town zoning regulations, so these paragraphs that were, and I won't read them, that are listed will be added to that section, that section 809 in the town zoning regulations. At the same time, we're also adding a definition for what an accessory on-farm business is, and that also is tied back to a Vermont state statute.
How many properties in Woodstock will this actually affect?
Well, we don't really know, because agricultural uses are an allowed use in the state of Vermont. So, this clarifies that an accessory use to a farm business is allowed. It could be anybody, basically.
Any farm?
It's a brand-new law, so just last year they passed to allow the ag uses, ag events, if you will, and we have four that are coming online that we know of, and there's probably more in the future as people take advantage of a brand-new law. So, that's why, and the state does recommend that we do this to make sure.
I was at the meeting when they made that recommendation, so.
And they did a great little handout question and answer about Act 143, so if anybody needs a copy, we can get you a copy that explains the law, explains how as municipality we're allowed to do this because we already have our site plan regulations. So, it will be reviewed just like any other business would be, but we can, the town cannot deny an accessory on-farm business.
Cannot deny it, but there are a site plan, other restrictions, not restrictions, but like parking and those.
Parking is the main element we would look at, landscaping of that, the lighting also
would be an element, noise could be an element.
Well, I was going to ask if it would come under the statutory when noise has to end in the evening and how early in the morning things.
Well, that's, we don't have a noise ending in the evening, we just have a 70 decibel limit.
Oh, okay.
But we would review it in the context of the neighborhood, so those kind of things would be looked at, but it's mainly parking is a key.
Go ahead, Jill, go ahead.
Do you envisage that this would have changed any of the nature of events held over the past few years?
They would have had a review process, and I think they would have understood better the implications of our local zoning more than they did, so I think it would have been a benefit to the town to have had this in place a few years ago, but we didn't have the ability until last year to do this.
So, we move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Finished?
Other comments?
Any comments? Yes? Any comments at all?
Any questions?
Okay, so where do we go from here?
So, it is your recommendation, Michael, that we pass this.
Amendment.
Exactly, amendment, zoning amendment. Yes.
I'd like to ask another question. Does all the planning and zoning commission agree on this?
I believe so, I can't remember the exact.
I think it was unanimous, because Sam made the motion.
Sort of like we adopt this, or they're kind of free to do what they please if we don't put this in place for review.
Well, the only control we have over these situations, and parking, to be honest, is one of the biggest issues with these situations, especially on back roads in rural areas, so we want to make sure. So, it does give us a local review of this. It's the only thing we can do, because the use is guaranteed by the state.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering what we have.
Wendy, it's a question. Wendy, just for the benefit of not being informed, those who aren't informed like me, what's an example of one of these activities that's up and coming that will go through this zoning review?
Well, there is a barn on Prosper Road, Comfort Road, Stage Road, if you will, and they want to do agricultural events where they're going to serve food, but it's going to be for corporate entities, they're going to come to this particular barn, and it's probably going to have up to 50 people, maybe 100 would attend there, and all the food would have to be produced on-site for the meal, if you will. So, he's waiting to get up to speed with his animals and crop production, so he hasn't presented anything to us yet, but we would review the parking on that situation and the lighting as it impacts that valley and allows the neighbors to have some input on what is going on, whereas if we don't have this in place, there would be no input for the neighbors.
So, accessory on-farm businesses include educational, recreational, and social events that feature agricultural practices and are qualifying agricultural practices, so as well as storage preparation and sales of qualifying products. So, the state ag department fairly well defines what an accessory use is, so people can, you know, if they fall into those categories, they can be doing that type of business in addition to their regular agricultural practices.
Any more comments? Any more comments? Questions, comments?
I believe we approve the amendment to the zoning regulations as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded, that we approve the regulations, the zoning amendment as presented.
And this is according to the allowance of state statute, right?
Right, yes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve it. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jill says aye. Any?
Yes.
Anything else? Ayes have it? Passed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Yes?
I'm Susie Falls from Central Street, and I wrote to Butch about this a while ago, but I was unable to admit, I was six, I couldn't attend the meetings. We're having a problem with invasive insects. Stink bugs are now in Woodstock, and I've seen several of them in my house, and other people have said they've seen them around, and they have the potential to get really bad really quickly. You know, people who have areas that have stink bug populations, you know, as the weather turns, they flood into people's houses, they get like up to 4,000 stink bugs at a time, and so we really need to address that. There are some traps that are available, but they only work during certain months of the year, like in March or April, so if we wanted to address the stink bug population, we'd have to do it quickly. Another invasive species are the oriental beetle, which I saw a ton of all over Woodstock last year. I put up some traps there, like $10. I put one in Shrigley Park, and I put one in my house, and I put one by the bank, and they work really well all year round, so that would be a good thing to do, but we really need to, you know, begin to think about addressing these.
Tell me about those traps again.
So, they're pheromone-based, so during mating season for the stink bugs, they attract them, they get caught in there, it releases a pheromone that attracts them, and then they go in there, and then they die. Same thing happens with the oriental bugs, the oriental beetles, they're these brown and white things that eat plants and destroy crops. Those traps also are pheromone-based. I got them on Amazon, and they work all year round, so if the bugs are active, that will kill them.
So, are you suggesting that we buy some traps, or the town and the village buy some traps and distribute them around?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, especially the stink bug ones, because you don't really want them getting into stores and destroying inventory and destroying people's homes, because they have a stink, right? They just, they have no natural predators, you know, there are stories about, you know, homes where people accidentally let the window open, and there's 4,000 bugs in their bedroom. And you can't really squish them, because that's where they get their name, stink bug, and they will destroy stuff if they release their stink. So, we really want to get on top of this.
I'm not confident with the name of those traps that you mentioned, so if you could email them, we would be able to consider it, but.
Do you still have them emailed, because I did send it back to.
I was sick too, and I.
I did, and I got it from the Vermont Wildlife, you know, the agriculture departments, they were the ones who talked about the.
Maybe Beth knows, she's got her in.
Beth.
I don't know, but I'm glad that Susie brought it up, because the Welcome Center was inundated with them this fall, and like last Friday, there was one inside, you know, and it was zero degrees out, so I'm glad that you brought that up.
They're here, they weren't in Vermont for a while, but they have moved up, and now they're here. I have done the research, and I will dig up the email, and I was forwarded back.
Can you put it on the list, sir?
So, people could buy them, yeah.
We could encourage people to buy them.
Yeah.
I have family in Maryland who live with this, and it is, they are very invasive, and they do take over the house, and my understanding is that they like to live in the walls, under the clabberds, and they get tucked in in a structure, and then when it gets warm enough, the right combination of warmth, they come into your house. So, it's not like they're flying around waiting for a window to pop in, they're already finding nooks and crannies where they hibernate or whatever they do. I'm not, I don't have, I've just witnessed them in your, a lot of them in a house, it's quite amazing. So, it is, it's too bad.
Amazing in a bad way.
No, it's too bad they made it to Vermont.
All right, really, thank you for that, I'm sorry I didn't follow up with it, but thanks for coming tonight and presenting it, and, yeah, well, I think it'd be something we need to be considerate of. Thank you. Any further citizens' comments?
Hi there. My name's Graham Hanky, and I'm with the Faulkner Park Working Group, and we would just like to take maybe five minutes and give you an update on our activities. So, I'm going to go ahead and pass out a document.
Thank you.
Certainly, so thank you for giving.
Do you have an extra sheet needed for the record?
Thank you for giving us an opportunity to address the board. So, for those who aren't aware, there was a proposal back in October of 2019 to essentially convey Faulkner Park out of the trust to the town and execute the legal arrangements to make that happen, the financial arrangements to make that happen. We felt, and as I said, I'm a member of a community group that's formed to investigate what's happening to Faulkner Park and the ins and outs of this proposal or other proposals, depending on what everyone decides to do. So, we have been going ahead and doing our research and basically following up this research with engagements in the town. We had the opportunity to go last week and address the village trustees, and we felt that was a productive meeting, we brought them up to date on our activities, and they seemed to be quite interested in exploring this further. And ultimately, our point, and I think our objective now, is to follow up on this board's suggestion and encourage the board to follow through to generate a citizens' committee that would explore this issue in detail and slow the process down a little bit, make sure we do our due diligence, and basically answer all the questions that need to be answered, look at all the data that needs to be examined, and come back to the board and the town with a recommendation on how to go forward. So, the document that we've prepared for you tonight reiterates our interest in the citizens' committee, and we make some recommendations on potential membership of this committee, and then we also lay out suggested tasks that the committee could pursue. And one of the things we see is, the benefit of this is that there is a proposal on the table, and it doesn't necessarily need to be the only proposal, and so we're hoping the committee can take a look at this issue more broadly, examine potential solutions, and come back to the board with the best possible outcome and the best possible recommendation. So, that in a nutshell is our update, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, at one of the last meetings, I said that I was going to appoint the citizens' committee to look into this, and I haven't done that, because I have not been able to find people who are interested or willing to serve other than those people that were opposed to it, and it's been difficult to find anybody who really cared, and that's why there hasn't been a citizens' committee. There's been some suggestions on citizens' committee, people from both your group and from some members of the board, but those people have not shown any interest. So, I find myself kind of floating out there to try to come up with a citizens' committee that's going to, you know, be looking at this from all angles.
Sure.
And also, the other suggestion that's been made is that we do put this on a slow pace for now and wait until our new town manager's on board and let him see what's going on and maybe help with the process. I'd be glad to expedite it. If you could give me a list of people that would have a different opinion than what you people have, it would make it a lot easier.
Absolutely, we made some recommendations in the document, and so there may be some proof we've got there, but I agree with you, I think this needs to be, certainly needs to be run by somebody who doesn't have a dog in the fight.
Right, and by saying that, I see that you say elected officials.
Well, we are urging the board to be careful about conflict of interest and ensuring that the board, when all is said and done, can vote on this without any need for refusal.
Is this the first distribution of this document? Then, based on what you just said, Butch, I would like to read that, one part of it, so that Jill hears what this says. To avoid any.
Thank you.
You're welcome. "To avoid any appearance of or any actual conflict of interest, we request that no elected town or village official or town employee be appointed to the citizens' committee. Interested parties could, however, be invited to submit reference materials to this committee." And then they have listed a suggestion, a list of suggested tasks, and it is unusual, I believe, that we don't have at least representation from the boards or have someone from the board attend your meetings, so that's something that we would have to consider.
Sure.
And, yes, the trustees last week did agree that they should be involved with it, so, and I like Butch's suggestion as well, and in that consideration, I'd like to make a motion to table this until a future meeting, which will be, could be as late as summer, because our new town manager will not be arriving till the end of March to work, so give him some time to get his feet on the ground, study the issues. That would be my motion.
I'd consider that motion, the motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded, and now, there's one ahead of you, Jill. Wendy, do you?
For Jill, Jill should talk first.
Jill should talk first, a member of the board.
Oh, I was just going to be the seconded.
Oh, it's, Ray seconded it.
Ray seconded it.
You can third it if you'd like. Okay, Wendy?
For the benefit of the group who's not looking at the letter, and for the benefit of Jill, perhaps read, Mary, the list of suggested members, the 1 through 10, above the please note.
All right.
This is the suggested profile of the group.
We suggest that a committee including representatives of each of the following
groups would be a workable size and would provide a balanced and desirable range of perspectives. One, village residents, Faulkner Park neighborhood and frequent users of Faulkner Park. Two, town residents, frequent users of Woodstock parks and trails. Three, the Faulkner Park Working Group. Four, Billings Park Commission. Five, March Billings Rockefeller National Park. Six, chairperson with neutral interest. In addition, engage representatives from the following groups as needed. Seven, the town and village investment advisory groups. Eight, the Homestead Incorporated Board of Directors. Nine, Woodstock Associates Incorporated Board of Directors. Ten, Woodstock Recreation Center Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I think we, this is very good, and I appreciate it, and so I have a motion on the floor.
Before you kick it into the summer.
Doug Raymond, real quick, before we kick this topic into the summer, what is the level of discussion between the current trustee, JP Morgan Chase, and the town?
As far as I know, there's been no further discussion since they were here to our meeting, is that right? Have you heard any?
I haven't heard.
No, we haven't heard a word.
And I just want to make sure, you know, I went through a very similar thing. The trustee is a financial services company, and they have, they're very disinterested in owning any real property. I mean, it's, this whole thing is for the benefit of JP Morgan Chase, not necessarily for the benefit of Woodstock and anything, so.
Shocking you should say that.
Thank you.
And I may or may not have used the word there.
Okay. Actually, I have a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor to table this until the future, and did you set a time limit?
I did not set a time limit, this is not an indefinite tabling, it's to give our new manager time to.
Absorb.
Absorb what's happening in more places than this, but this will be one of the projects.
Maybe they can find some people that don't want this, you know, get some volunteers for the.
Any names that you can come up with this?
We could probably.
All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Jill says aye. John says aye.
You know, with these requirements about no elected town or village officials, and then you go back here and look at where they want people from, this might be a challenge.
Yeah, that's what I found, trying to get people that were interested. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, we did.
Did you?
Yeah, we did.
Motion carried, all right. Okay, moving right along. Any other citizens' comments to be brought before this meeting? All right. Any old business? Appears there's no old business on the agenda. New business? Two Rivers Out of Queche Planning Commission?
Thanks for bringing Tori. Tori Littlefield.
What's that?
Tori Littlefield, she's my name. So, I think Frank has the forms.
Frank has the forms.
He was distributed.
Yeah, so this is, there's two forms that you guys need to sign for the community development block grant that we received with you guys, so this is just completing the award condition before we can get a fully executed grant agreement with the state of Vermont. So, it's the PM 4 form, which is just designated, designating the Two Rivers Out of Queche Regional Commission as the grant administrator, so that's taking all the responsibility away from you guys, and then there's the MP 1 form, which is just verifying that you have codes and ethics.
Now, this is related to the housing study that you presented to us several months ago.
Yes.
And it has finally come to the agreement stage.
Yes, takes a while.
Do you recall that, Jill?
All right.
Yes, I do.
I move we designate Two Rivers Out of Queche Regional Commission as our representatives and designate it as the public agency for this grant to act on our behalf. And also.
Motion's been made to second it. Any further discussion on the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes have it.
Secondly, I make a motion that we approve the municipal policies and codes and sign Form MP 1 for the Vermont State Government EEO Planning Grant.
Right, for 2017?
Yes.
Yes, all right. That motion's been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded.
Ray seconded, thank you. You can third that one again.
Secondly, I make a motion that we approve the municipal policies and codes and sign Form MP one for the Vermont State Government EEO Planning Grant.
Right, for 2017?
Yes.
Yes, all right. That motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded it?
I'm seconded.
Ray seconded it, thank you. You can third that one again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it.
Is that when the year they grow the grant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Get these signed and get them to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting, Tori.
You're welcome.
All right.
To adopt the municipal policies.
All right, so the next on the agenda is the review and approval, the engineer service agreement with Hoyle Tanner for the South Woodstock Water Treatment Plant. Frank?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I need authority from you to execute an agreement for engineering services for South Woodstock. It's a standard by the American Council of Engineering Companies, the American Society of Civil Engineers, the National Society of Professional Engineers. It's just an agreement for services and a companion piece. I need authority to sign a D E C Environmental Conservation Certification Page. The engineering contract is a massive document, I didn't burn trees for that, but I have copies of the D E C Certification Form that you can take home with you. It's a, it's our ability to access the clean water funds to pay for the engineering.
All right.
Cover page is pretty detailed, preliminary engineering report, various other things they're going to do for $79,000.
And you would be the designated?
Yes. For that being, would be the...
Can I ask a question?
Sure can.
Should the bond, should the bond vote not pass, then how would you pay for this?
We have five years to figure that out.
Okay.
And didn't we sign something? Was it the last couple of months that said if the bond vote doesn't pass, we would figure that out?
No, I don't think so.
No, we, what we signed, what we signed at last month's meeting was a document that allows us to go back and pick up expenses that we've spent over the last 90 days.
Oh, and put them into the bond.
And put them into the...
That's right, thank you, sorry. Okay, I propose a motion to designate municipal manager Frank Heel to review and approve the engineering service agreement with Hoyle Tanner for engineering services and as well to execute the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation Certification.
I'm not going to repeat all that. Motion's been made and seconded by John. All those in favor, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So the permits on the Green Mountain Power Permit for the pole replacement up on Grassy Lane, I'm going to suggest that we table that until weather permits the board to do a site visit and make sure that it complies with the town plan.
I'll second the motion.
So, motion's been made and seconded, I made the motion, seconded by John, to table it until time makes for further, for a site visit. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Aye.
All right. Parade permit is the next thing, and that is a parade permit or...
Covered Bridges.
Covered Bridges Marathon, yep. Thank you, Mary.
I have that every year.
This is a regular event.
I make a motion that we approve it.
We have the insurance certificate. There appears to be no changes. Just remember, everyone, you can't get from Pomper to Woodstock and spend two hours on Sunday, June 7th.
I have never heard any complaints.
I'll remember that.
There's never complaints.
I have never heard any complaints. Motion's been made and...
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion about the Covered Bridges Half Marathon? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Brings a lot of people to Woodstock that weekend.
All right, so now we have some...
Liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses, Woodstock Hospitality, all of these have been paid and, so one thing I'd like to suggest, I think I brought this up at a previous meeting a while ago, that the approval of these liquor licenses for public buildings, I suggest that, I suggested and I strongly suggested again, that these buildings be inspected by the fire department before these liquor licenses are granted. I don't know that we can do that without some further action, but I do think it's a good idea that any code violation, especially for overcrowding or exiting, should be addressed in these establishments.
Have you looked into that, David, or Butch's previous suggestion?
I have, and I am meeting with the Director of Public Safety tomorrow to get our agreement or find where it stands, and once that is signed, I will have the authority to inspect those and follow through with any enforcement or recommendation that's needed.
So, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were directing that question.
I don't know that I was, but I just, you know, are there any of these that you would have any concerns about?
All right, he didn't say who they are yet.
I thought he knew. He just said he knew.
Well, I don't recognize all of those.
No, because they are under...
Yeah, different names.
Woodstock Hospitality is 506 on the river.
Right.
Keegan Valley Inn speaks for itself.
Charles, Charles, what's that, China?
That's Woodstock Beverage. Woodstock Beverage.
Woodstock Beverage?
Mm-hmm.
I'm more concerned about the places where they have restaurants and bars.
A lot of restaurants in those places, yeah.
Restaurants and bar seating.
Well, we have none of those tonight.
None of them are here.
No, not this evening.
Okay, I just think it's something we should look into.
Couple of these are outside consumption for liquor licenses that exist.
Okay, we can approve these in a block.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Seconded.
Motion's been approved, made and seconded that we approve these as submitted. Any further discussion?
Beth?
I just have a question of N and B.
Nicole and Burbank L S P, that's her name.
Softly good.
Okay, thank you.
Another question?
No.
All those in favor, strike a motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes appear to have it. Okay, now we move on to the Board of Sewer Commissions. Frank?
We have an application for sewer connection. The applicant is Hoag's on Shertland Lane. It's for a 240 gallon per day, two-bedroom house. It's been approved by the Aqueduct Company. Appears to have a water permit from the state. Recommend that we approve it.
Is the 240, is this a two-bedroom or...
It's two-bedroom.
It's a two-person household, but this is based on bedrooms, right, the sewer permit?
There's a growing attached, doesn't seem...
There's a big hole there.
I didn't see it.
It is. I didn't see it either, on the backside of the table.
The Aqueduct Company called it a two-bedroom residence.
Well, two-bedroom is the...
Minimum, and 240 is the right calculation for that?
It is.
And I move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve that. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Okay, okay, the next is the request adjustment for the sewer bill.
The first one is the Malick's. Apparently, there is a billing error which should result in a correction of $161.
To return to the...
Yes.
Yeah, we owe those, we owe them $161.23.
They're now a single family.
Yep. Do you know them?
Son's daughter.
Yeah, I know where it is, yeah.
Can you pay it soon?
I move to approve the request for Naomi Malick for a sewer bill for five Stanton Street, formerly billed as a duplex, it's now only a single-family resident, residence, with a refund of $161.23.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I second it.
Okay, you can third it again. Ray's beaten you tonight on those seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I think there's a sound delay, so she doesn't get the chance to get in there right quickly.
I could have stopped, say, I could have stopped speaking earlier.
All right.
She's only 60 miles away. Okay, the other one is the Woodstock Resort Corporation.
This is a more sizable...
This looks huge.
It's gigantic.
It's for those chillers.
One is for the chillers and other, the other is for the unit itself, but for some reason, we build them both at the chiller rate, so the reduction is significant.
So this is for the athletic club and being the same as the cooling tower. When reviewing and talking with Mr. Olson as well as during, I found that the cubic feet should be quite significantly less.
What I don't know is why we build for 664, 353 cubic feet in the first place, but the amended meter reading, should say sent us a picture of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See you. Roger.
I don't know where that was taken. The leader?
The previous.
The previous Reed.
Yeah.
Obviously, from the bill, it was 46, 48, 77.
But it comes from the Aqueduct Reed.
They built 66. And for some reason, we... We can take some time to get some more information if you want, I think so.
I think so.
My thought is, how does this compare with the last few years?
Yeah, 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 that's a...
That's a lot of money.
I think we need a lot more information.
A lot of bucks here.
And we might have to go to the Aqueduct for it.
My question was, is this, is this a straightforward mistake that hasn't carried forward into any budgets or anything like that, or do we have to take different action going forward because of it?
Well, if the, if the meter readings are correct, we obviously had a billing issue, and we would need to absorb that $43,000 of this year's sewer budget. We'll get more information for your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. And so the next one is 128 Shertland Lane for a refund of $482.66, and that obviously was a...
Change of use.
Change of use, yeah.
Do we have a normal practice on this?
Well, the challenge, Jill, is the, the challenge is that we're using numbers that are actually almost a year old from the Aqueduct Company.
Yes.
And in this particular case, I think Jill, Beth got the letter and simply moved on it.
I mean, their, their Aqueduct bill is within the minimum, it's $60. Within the minimum, how they got overbilled is...
It's what they used the year previously. It did go through their water meter and through the system, and this has been the practice of how the billing has always been done.
It suggests that the next person who buys the property will have a very, very low bill.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, the minimum is 60, so that's based on that, but for $60, which is...
That was...
But that was in 1116? Is that what that said? No, no, I don't know what that number means.
I don't know what that refers to.
I don't.
No.
It was for the year 19, wasn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, see, our tax, our billing period is this year. We're billing for the 19 to 20, but the, the usage from the prior year, while he was in that house, that is what it used. That's the amount of water that they used the last year they were there. But because it says 719 to 630, 20, he is contending that they're not there this year, so they shouldn't be paying that amount.
If you're not there, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're not in the house, you're still going to pay your water meter.
You're going to pay.
You're going to pay the minimum.
You're going to pay the minimum.
And the sewer's going to be billed off from that, whether you live there or whether you don't.
That's right.
And...
And they are a family.
And if you use more, you pay more, but no matter, you can go, you can close up your house and go away for six months, but you're still going to pay the minimum.
So you still have to pay the 966.
And just because he moved away doesn't mean that he's exempt from the minimum payment of 60 bucks. So I'd say we, we, there's no, there's no argument here that, that...
But it is, oh, it's not 60 bucks, isn't it? Isn't it 975?
Well, I'm just throwing that nine out there. It's the, you know, it's the cubic, yes, but...
It's 966 down.
Yeah, but I'm, I, I...
It's a lot.
Yeah, I don't think we have any action here. I think that...
I make a motion, we deny this request.
Unless we get further information.
Unless we have some other information. I, that went through our system.
Motion's been made that we deny the request unless we have further information. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
We haven't even had the... We haven't even had, did we have a second yet?
I have a question.
Yes, Jill.
Yes.
Does anyone second it yet?
Yes, I have a second, yes.
Who did?
You did. Oh, you didn't?
No, we haven't a second yet, Jill.
Sorry about that.
I'll second it, just to have a discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I understand the principle of following the system to make the charge, but it doesn't feel quite right, and I perhaps like us to look at our system.
You mean, the billing process? The billing?
Yes.
Okay. I have, I have always recognized the confusion of the homeowner when they are not there getting billed for an amount that went through a year previously. And we processed that amount of water while they were there, because they said that they moved out in July of 2019. Oh, no, they moved out in August, so...
Yeah, I, I...
They were simply billed the minimum, plus 100 gallons. Their bill should have been 966 instead of 975.66.
Yeah, but we don't...
So, there's actually a $9 difference?
Well, it's not much.
No. I don't see that.
But if, if the house is, if, so, next year, when the, let's say it takes 12 months to sell the house and the house is empty, what will the bill be for that year?
It will be 10,000 gallons, 10,000 cubic feet.
It'll, it'll be, you don't get away scot-free, you still have to pay the minimum for the water, and then the water reflects the sewer.
Would it be 966?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
No, that's for the sewer.
No, that's for the sewer.
But the, so the sewer is, our minimum charge for sewer is 966?
Yes.
For a family, for a family. However, if, if they have a water meter, is, do we know, is this a, a red, a meter red? Or is it a...
Yeah, it's a red meter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a meter red.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless we can get...
What the meter says.
I, I understand your confusion, but I think in, for this particular case...
I don't have, okay.
We should just...
I actually don't have any confusion, I don't have any confusion at all. I understand our system. I just don't think our system is great in this situation.
Well, I may agree with you.
I agree with you.
So, what we would say to this is we deny it unless we get further information. That's the motion on the floor. And I will second it.
But with a, with a really good rest of explanation.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion? Ready for the vote?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it.
I abstain.
Okay. You have... What's going to happen in the future is, and has already happened, is the Aqueduct's going to go up on their minimums, and the ball begins to roll.
That's right.
Okay. All right. So, here we go.
Where are we?
We are...
Where's my agenda, right here?
We are Board of Sewer Commissioners.
We're at the Managers' Report.
We're at the Managers' Report.
And I will be brief.
Thank you.
Bill Kerman, Bill Kerman and I have been in a reasonably constant conversation, assuming a bunch of things come together and the weather's not bad. He will try to be here, well, first of all, he's going to be here at the Weekend Town Meeting through the Reorg Meeting on the Fourth. I suspect his wife is going to be parked next to Butch's for immediate departure after the Reorg meeting. You're, you're still leaving right after?
Sure am.
The, his current schedule, everything comes together. He will be here on Monday, the 23rd, as opposed to the 25th. That does depend on whether, a couple of other things coming together. Just so you're aware, my transition with Bill will end no later than the 30th, as I'm traveling beginning on the 31st. I'll be available after April 8th for incidental consults as needed. David has been kept in the loop, as we have discussed. Wow, there's nobody here. David has been kept in the loop on most issues, so I've great confidence the transition will be seamless. We expect the annual books, I think he told me this afternoon, tomorrow.
Yep, 10 days before.
So, I think you'll be excited to see those.
Mary's very excited.
As I indicated earlier, for the benefit of the sewer commissioners, understanding you're the same as the, you are the sewer commissioners. The wastewater treatment facility engineer is, is on board and working. We have a woman that's the principal engineer in this job. And as is the case with most engineers in Vermont, I've worked with her before, and have found her to be very confident, competent. I look forward to that. And for the record, this will be my last select board meeting with you all, because the next board meeting is scheduled for April. It's been a pleasure working for you, and we'll continue on until the bitter end.
All right, thank you for that. You will be here for town meeting.
You will be there.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to be here for town meeting, witness that for the world. They tell me it's a great lunch.
Yeah, it is a good lunch.
The financial reports you have in your package. I do not, I'm not aware of any anomalies that are troublesome to me. Capital Reserve on the bottom of the front page has taken a fair hit. It's, the insurance has not come in on Lincoln Bridge from, from passing yet.
How much is the insurance value, Frank?
I'm sorry, Jill?
How much is the insurance request?
It covers all but about somewhere in the $50,000 range. We did $40,000 or $50,000 of extra work on that bridge while we had it closed. The roof floor abutment and some of the underpinning there was in really sorry shape, so when we had the bridge closed, we did work that needed to be done. But I think the insurance covers everything except about 50.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? I did bring the details, just in case.
I did, but I think I, I figured it out. I'm good.
If that, you wanted to discuss town meeting assignments.
Right.
Working diligently, Jill has prepared some talking points for each of the major items outside of the budget itself. We would suggest, we being staff, that we use these talking points. It kind of changed the paradigm a little bit for this year's presentation. Have somebody leading off, talking about, I'm just going to pass these down so you can look. Jill, these are the things that you prepared, so you know what I'm talking about. Well, we suggest that somebody kind of lead off, and we'll flesh this out a little more, and talk about the town budget, and essentially, the issues as to why it's up. And there are some details on the, on the next page. Then, somebody representing the sewer department could talk about the sewer budget. Again, that's reasonably straightforward. As I said earlier in the meeting tonight, the 106 increase in fees, about half of that is eaten up with the money that we put in the budget that could be used for preliminary, preliminary engineering, or at least an analysis of the main wastewater treatment plant, to give you some idea of what that's going to cost. And then I have included, we included some reserve money for compensated absences to deal with that. The, improving the Woodstock roads, we're not quite finished on that, but somebody could take that detail. The discussion of the regional energy coordinator. And the, if somebody wants to take the full-time emergency medical service, emergency medical services, ambulance services piece. I guess anything that, any questions that get profound, you can point them over to me. And there is the issue of Vale Field Tennis and Basketball Courts. Some years ago, there was a study done that talked about a couple hundred thousand dollars to redo the tennis courts and basketball courts. And we're getting very close to having that money put aside.
Okay, so, speak your piece for whichever topic you would like to present. The first one is the...
Jill? Jill?
Yes?
Since you wrote most of these, which is your preference to present at town meeting?
I'd like to be the shared regional energy coordinator, and, and Article 11, and I'd like to do Article 10 on the roads.
All right, Article 11. And Article 10? Oh, I see, right here, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. All right.
I will do the, the ambulance and the creating of the, or the fire department, along with David.
Okay.
So, Jill, on the roads, does that include the sidewalks and the curbs and, or just repairing?
We put the sidewalks in with, we put the sidewalks in with the town budget, so really, that's part of that one.
So...
Part of roads.
It could, it could be part of the same conversation. I guess we could do it either way. But it's, the money is put in the town budget right now.
And I believe that Frank did such a good job with South Woodstock tonight that he should do South Woodstock.
Frank is doing the sewer.
Okay.
Unless you...
You good with that, Jill?
Unless you want to brief Ray, and Ray can do it.
No, I'll do Vale Field.
You'll do Vale Field, okay.
Okay. All right, and Ray...
So, now, I would suggest, I would suggest Mary do the town budget. Article 5, Mary.
Would John prefer to do the roads? Should I go away, should I take my name off that one?
You do the energy coordinator, one, and...
Yeah, and then maybe John would, John likes to do the roads.
John would do the highway budget, but I think the, the village part of it, the curbs and sidewalks, that should probably be separate.
Well, Jill and Ray did most of that.
If Jill doesn't want to do it, I'll do it.
Yeah. You want to do that, Ray?
Yes, I will.
I don't want, but I will.
Ray will do that.
He said he would.
John, what's your preference?
Well, the town highway.
Okay. Let's let John do his thing with the town highway.
Yeah, I think I could do this town budget.
Oh, I think you'd do it very well.
Really, quite...
I'll put some stuff together for you, John.
John, Ray said he'll put some stuff together for you.
It's quite, this is, this is excellent. This is an easy thing to do.
Yeah. I would, I would like to try to change the way we've done it for years of getting out the, going through the budgets, line item by line item, and saying, well, this, this, this sign is up a little more, we need to buy more signs, and, you know, it's kind of boring. People got the budget booked in front of them.
I like how this is...
They got any questions, we're going to hit the highlights, the highlights here, and...
The articles.
If people got questions about anything, they can always ask.
This is hitting me.
And I just want to emphasize that we tried to really talk about how much this would impact people for $100,000 or $200,000 of their home, so that we could actually have numbers that mean something.
Right.
Yeah, you know, you can tell somebody it's going to be so much on a $100,000 house or $200,000 house, and then that bill arrives in August, and it's, what?
Okay. I think that's a good, a good program. Now, the other thing, at town meeting, we will give Ray and, I mean, Bill an opportunity to speak, of course, there'll be a part there. The other thing that I'd like to do is, the, the town report is dedicated to Phil. And I would like to ask the audience if they would, I would like to say that we would like to dedicate this meeting to Phil as well, and ask people just to take a moment in remembrance of, of Phil. I think it's only appropriate, this final, this is the final chapter, Phil, Phil is, we can't continue to dwell on the issue, but I think it's only appropriate for this year that we, that we do this.
I agree.
And if anybody doesn't have any objections, I'll do that. And so, and then on the Fourth, we'll have our organizational meeting. And next meeting will be in April, which I will be tardy from. Anything else?
No.
That I forgot?
I don't believe so.
Oh, wow, I'm doing good.
I do have one question. Next year is your last year, F this term, of the current term.
My term is up next year, I don't know if Jill's term's up next year. Why do you ask?
I don't know, I just, because I...
Planting ahead.
Yeah. Thinking forward.
You're going to run against me?
No, I'm not going to run against you next year. No, this, two years ago, I thought this would be my last meeting.
Well...
Thank you.
Great.
Yes.
Anything else?
You need to do minutes.
Minutes.
Oh.
Yeah, we got to do the minutes.
Yes, we got to do the minutes.
Got to do the minutes.
We had, we had a few...
And warrants.
The warrants, but then we can, we can adjourn pending this. Any, any minutes, let's look at the minutes.
Only because I know this is how I always say it. On the February 7th meeting, where, at the beginning of the meeting, when we were out here before we went into executive session, it says on there that I said there would probably be no... I think it says there are votes made, and I usually say, "Votions made or votes taken."
See ya.
Okay? And that's, that's my only change there.
Anything else for the meetings? Seventh, seventh, December?
I gave some to Nikki earlier, but, so are you reading changed ones now, or Nikki, or what?
I did hand out the changed ones.
Yes.
She handed out the changed ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to move those minutes?
Yes, move the minutes as, as revised and presented.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I'm going to abstain, just because I can't see them, so just
That's perfectly fine.
That's fine.
She is abstaining.
So there is a meeting here on this Thursday.
Thursday morning at eight fifty.
And that
And you'll be calling in, Jill?
I will.
Okay. Then I make a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you.
This fun fest.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. No further, I mean, any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Jill, can I